Welcome Board of Education, Harlan Community School District, to this May 15th regular board meeting of the Harlan School District. And welcome everybody else. Nice to see a full room.
I'm Laura Sturridge.
I'm Ashley Sturridge.
And others, so here we go. I guess we have on the finance Rachel Larson and Collysey Schekinger-Dazleton and Albertson. And so our first thing we'll do is call the V E to an order and determine that we have a quorum, which we're looking good. We've got everybody here.
Uh huh.
Catherine. Okay, so we have a quorum and I don't think we have to vote on that, do we?
Uh huh.
Okay, so the first item here is the public forum. Just wanted to mention that this is a public forum and citizens and particularly parents are always welcome to come and have their say. There's a requirement to make a couple hour before talk Catherine. And if anybody asked to come today, no one asked. So we'll proceed past the public forum. You're fine. And we'll go to item C to take a look at the agenda and approve the agenda. Any discussion on the agenda tonight?
Sure.
If not, can we get a motion from someone to approve the agenda? So voted by Joe.
Second.
We've got Al seconding that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we have discussion item D. And so we'll turn it over to the superintendent for that.
Okay. We had 105 graduates yesterday, so that's exciting. I think it went off pretty well without a hitch, so that was great.
Whose idea was the 2023 signs out front?
The 2023 signs?
The big 2023.
Did you not see?
Those were good. We need to do that.
Yeah.
A lot of students.
It was super cool for pictures.
Somebody's breathing. I don't know. Well, it made you guys look so good.
They were inside for prom.
Thank you.
Oh, I wonder if they were something like.
They were really neat.
They're cool.
Some for negative money.
Thank you.
No.
High schools.
Wow, what a job.
School board appreciation month.
Thank you.
I feel very lucky.
Great.
School board appreciation.
Oh, this is great.
Oh, you took all the good stuff out, didn't you? Probably took your cookies.
Thank you. This is very nice.
Okay, so first off, we have our representatives from Special Olympics. So Maddie, do you want to talk about what you guys did during the State Special Olympics?
Yes, we were actually invited to run with Special Olympics at the Drake Relays. And so we had a unified relay team. So we had one, well initially we had two high school students and two middle school students that were on the team. And then one of our high school students was actually sick. And so it ended up being three, no, three middle school students and one high school student. Lathan, do you want to stand up? Lathan is our only one that was able to make it today. How'd you feel about going to Drake? Was it fun? Was it really busy? We got to go down for the whole day and just like watch all the colleges run. And they even had like Paralympics meets that were running at the same time. It was an awesome experience. We got to see a couple other teams run as well. And some of the teams that we've seen at other Special Olympics events were there too. So it was really, really cool.
Well, thank you, Lathan, for representing Harlan. That's a really cool thing. Yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay, and then we also have our IJ program is here. And Lori's got a presentation she wants to share with us. And she's got some students with her as well.
So I'll do just a short introduction of what IJAG is in case some of you are not very familiar. And then tell you a little bit about what our program has actually done this year. So IJAG stands for Iowa Jobs for American Graduates. Ooh, yeah.
One too far. Sorry.
That's okay. And in our classroom, we do projects that have to do with the real world or something has to do with their lives. So there's a lot of meaning in those projects. They get to really explore who they are and what they want to do in their life. We, our projects help them explore several basic areas. Career readiness, character and self-development, communication technology, critical thinking and productivity, life skills, self-advocacy, and conflict resolution, as well as work-based learning. We also, we have, we try to build relationships within the community, both with secondary education as well as employers. At the beginning of the year, the students all take like career assessments. We have a lot of conversations about what their interests are. And then into the classroom, I bring guest speakers. And then we go out of the classroom, go do college tours as well as workplace tours. As the students, after the exploration period is done, then we start trying to do a little bit more in-depth exposure. Like maybe instead of just visiting the workplace, we are involved in an activity at that workplace. Eventually, we want to get to the point where the kids are actually getting some actual real-world experience. Do a job shadow. Find out, is this career they thought they liked, do they really like it? Go spend half a day in a job shadow. If they still find that this is something they're interested in, we'll try to find a mentor, get them involved in an apprenticeship so that we can get towards our final goal. We want all of the students not only to graduate, but have a very specific plan, either for continuing education in a traditional sense of a college through a trade school, or maybe go right into employment in a position that is along their career pathway. We try to help the students overcome barriers. Some of them have academic, personal, environmental barriers. Maybe their home's income isn't what we would like. Or maybe they just don't have a lot of work experience. But through the program, we try to help them overcome those barriers. This is the most fun part. This is what we've been doing. On the first day of school, I had four kids. I'm like, oh no. But by the end of the year, I had 26 students who enrolled. Five of them graduated. And I'm working, I will continue working with them throughout the graduates who this next year, helping make sure that they're, most of them have plans. A couple of them still need to work on their plans. But help make sure that those plans are successful. I have 50 students enrolled next year, but I'm still doing some recruiting.
What's the capacity for?
Um, probably about 60 would be the top.
So we're getting close.
Yeah.
Perfectly possible in one year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that is good.
Well, these are some of our guests. We had quite a few guests. I tried to hit for one guest or in-classroom activity a month. So we had Agarland, we had Gallup, HMU, Conductix. We had representative from Pottawatomi County Council. We had from Shelby County, Chamber of Commerce came, as well as many, many others. We also, we went out, this is not even half of our field trips. We did a lot of different things. So, and you can see, the kids had a great time. Just driving was fun. I'm gonna kind of mishap, one problem with having the larger classes, well, I won't get to drive because we had the music going. We had a great bonding time traveling. And you can see, we had, we did a lot of experiences that maybe are not a typical experience. Maybe they think they want to go in one field, but I encourage them to experience other types of things too. It's like you're not just, if you want to be a makeup artist, okay. Well, still, you can come take a look at these other kind of experiences too.
So where, like where's that one at?
This was, oh, this one, we went to the Capitol. I have, that one was kind of for a fun trip, but we did learn a little bit about, there's internships that students can have with the legislators. But we have a president, we have five vice presidents, and our five vice presidents each work on a specific area. And our civic awareness really wanted to go to the Capitol. So that was a plan that he came up with. He helped organize it, get the information to the other students. And so IJAG really is a good way for the students to really develop their leadership skills as well. All right, we also have a lot of community service. Some of my students were involved with Habitat of Humanity with an extreme shed build. We've done some community cleanup. And we also have a partnership with an organization called Together. They provide services to families who are in danger of becoming homeless or who, or they go out and do an outreach for people who are actually homeless. So the kids don't interact with the homeless, but they go help stock shelves. One of my business young ladies was helping take inventory, you know, things like that. So they're again getting some real-world experience as well as participating in that community service. I mentioned our career association, that's our club. Our students who were left into leadership got to go to a fall development, leadership development conference where they received some training and were really built up, excited about their new position. I also had a couple of students, they went and to participate as lobbyists on legislative days. They went and talked directly, just the two of them, to Representative Holt. And they must have done a good job because IJAG now has a million extra dollars to start 15 new programs. There were other students as well, but I was so proud of them. They were so brave and they did a great job. And all of those projects that we do in the classroom, all of these experiences where the kids are developing their skills, it kind of culminates in our spring career development conference where they get to, they submit projects to be judged. And those projects that win get to go and compete. And we had quite a big group get to go and compete for a first-year program. And then we didn't win for nationals, but it was our first year. And I am still very proud, proud of all of the progress that the kids have done. And in the classroom, in the classroom, we build a community. It's like a little family, my classroom. We have, during lunchtime, we've got maybe nights in the afternoon and do just a lot of other things where we're, we are like a bit of a family. We work on teamwork and we also work on academic strategies. One day a week, I pull the kids' grades in all of their classes and help them come up with a plan for the classes that they're not doing so well in. So that is, that is a huge part of what we do. So I've got students who have their stories to tell.
Weren't you gonna last? You're gonna be in a big jill if I don't want to go last.
Hi, I'm Tiki Putnam, and I am the Vice President of Career Development here at IJAG. And I would be, I'd be delighted for you to hear me talk about how IJAG has helped me with my career associations and how it has helped me for my future development in my career. So Ms. Pilashay has helped me with a bunch of different things, like filling out a job application that I filled out a couple weeks ago. It's gotten me to be out there more for just getting to know different people about like jobs and stuff. I went to a couple of the different job field trips and I thought it was just amazing how she has helped complete our job-looking experiences. I have also helped with a couple of, one, tried helping with one of the field trips to go to Monogram. That was, ended up to be canceled, but that's going to be rescheduled. And back to how it helped me with my career-like looking and my future plans. I'm really into like the music business. So while I was here, she helped me with how I would get there and how I would live like afterwards, after school and stuff. I was planning on going to Warburg College. I looked at multiple different colleges that I might be interested in for music careers. But I thought that one stood out the most to me. I love their program and I loved how IJAG has been a huge help to it. And I was thinking about becoming a composer or a teacher at like multiple different colleges or just like going around the world just talking about music. And I just think IJAG was a perfect fit for me to continue my career or start my career.
Very good.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Peck, and I'm one of the newer members of IJAG. I joined this semester because I thought it would be a good opportunity to figure out what I'm going to do with my life after high school. I was originally thinking of going into, into veterinarian stuff. And as I, as I took IJAG, I figured out, hey, maybe I don't want to do this. I'm going to go into Air Force and fly planes. But IJAG has definitely helped me with organizations of my academics. I definitely had some lacking grades. And we have these check-in Thursdays where we write a reasonable goal to reach that week. And then the next, the following Friday, Ms. Pilashay looks at those goals, says, okay, you've reached this, okay, have a fun Friday. If we haven't, that's okay, work on your goal. See if you can reach it next week. It's definitely, it's definitely helped with my grades because after I joined IJAG, my grades just stayed above at least a C. That's great for me.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alistair Sampson. I'm one of the original four IJAG students, which I think is a great accomplishment. I used, when I first, sorry. My first couple days of my junior year, I was not a very social person. I was always not very comfortable giving presentations or talking in front of a lot of people, which of course that's changed because of IJAG, because I'm here with you now. Um, I've gotten better giving presentations, I've gotten better with talking to people. I've made a lot of new friends and I've had a lot more experiences. I always knew since I was little that I want to be a music artist, but thanks to IJAG, I know that I can accomplish that dream of mine. I was also a participant of the CDC competition, which is a competition where a bunch of IJAG students get together and compete with different problem-solving skills. I competed in the creative problem-solving department. And our problem was how to help unemployment in our state. And we came up with, we came up with a nonprofit organization that helps employers find employees in Iowa. Of course, we didn't win, but I still found it, it was a great experience to learn how to creatively solve problems like over everyday lives. And also the tofu there was pretty great.
Well, I don't know if anybody has any questions for me or for the students. Or this is my supervisor, this is Daryl.
My name's Daryl Wright, I'm Program Manager with IJAG. I'm really here just to support them. I don't have to talk, but if you have questions, we'd love to answer those for you. And we're so excited. Lori has done a phenomenal job. Your students are amazing. I love coming. We have a lot of fun over here. And so they have just done a phenomenal job. And we're, again, we're just excited to see the growth, you know, to go from four. Now we're lined up for 50 already. Love to see that be right around 60 next year. So we're serving as many of your students as possible. So again, great opportunity and we're thankful for your support of us. And we want to continue to be a big part of what's happening here in Harlan.
Really appreciate your speeches and your information because I really didn't know the whole picture of it. It's a great program and you guys have did a great job. Thank you.
And then all three of you have a great job. It's not easy talking in front of strangers, but people at home, right? Made great eye contact and carried on a conversation. You guys already have the soft skills, I feel. So great job. Just keep it up.
I heard about it a couple of years ago, but I believe we have funding from outside businesses and that type of thing, so that's a.
Yeah, so we have three funding streams. So the school district invests a small amount. There's an amount that is, I say small amount, I mean, it's an amount, but it's about a third of the cost, a little less. And then we do receive some money from the state, so we have a line item in the state budget. So that's why we had some students from Harlan who went to be a part of what we call Legislative Days. And we help lobby and ask the state to continue to support our work. And then the other third comes from private donor dollars. And we work with foundations and companies and organizations to help support the work that we're doing with our students and our communities. And I wanted to point out, I know Lori mentioned this a little bit. One of the key pieces of IJAG is she had five graduates this year. And she will follow up with them for an entire year post-graduation. Once a month, she's going to reach out to them. If things are great, she's going to cheer them on. If they're struggling in any way, she's going to continue to be there to be a support for them in that transition year. And it's one of the significant parts of the program that really helps drive success for our young men and women that are coming through the program.
And I think you guys are the best advocates for the program.
Amen.
You know, your lives and how you're succeeding. So if you know of people who maybe fit the criteria or you think are shy, or I think you guys are the best to go up to them and offer them this opportunity, because that's who they want to hear it from, is their peers that are benefiting from it. So, but thanks for coming today. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much. You've done a great job. And going from four to 50 is huge.
That's crazy.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you.
You hear about those programs, but until you actually, they actually speak about it and talk about it, it's, you get the whole picture. Yeah.
To get another teacher.
Catherine?
Good program, ma'am.
Another teacher.
Another teacher. They pay part of the teacher's salary.
Yeah.
Sure. So you bet, two more teachers.
They do go middle school all the way up. So you could have a middle school, a ninth and 10th, or.
Yeah.
What is the youngest grade? Do you know? They serve, I don't know if it's sixth or seventh grade. I feel like it's sixth, because I know some districts that have them in the middle school. They have. But in our class? Oh, we, just high. Oh, ours is just high school. So any high schooler, right now, I think she's taking anybody who wants to be part of the program. But as we hit that top number, then we'll start to have to have an application process and qualify, and they have, they have ways that they, I don't really know what the. We haven't had to have a qualification process yet. We're just trying to, you know, have as many involved as we can, so.
I'm sure it fits the mentoring concept really well. All that we can get.
Do you know, is the community pretty much behind it? Do you know?
Yes, she has, part of what she does is build partnerships with community businesses. And she works with them, so part of her day is working with kids and part of her day is connecting and working with businesses and trying to just connect school to community. And she's done a wonderful job of being an advocate for the school district and the bigger businesses as well as the smaller businesses. I know when we applied for the STEM best grant, that Steve needed businesses. He went to her and she gave him 15 names and they all joined, so.
Well, we track graduation rates, but.
I would assume that through that program, they do. Yeah, they do. And I mean, like this, we track that.
Right, but I'm just meaning correlation with this program specifically. I would assume that it would be helpful for.
To keep them on track.
Graduation rates.
Yeah, yes.
Because, I mean, part of it is at risk, correct?
Yes. That's a large part of it.
So I would have, I would think there'd be a correlation between elevating our gradu-, not that it's bad, but graduation rates as well.
Yes, for sure. Okay, Facility Committee update.
Okay, I guess you all probably know the auditorium is moving along. And I'm sure Brian and Jenny are in close contact with Stephen and doing everything you need to do. Tomorrow's a big day, the big bid letting at 2 o'clock for any board member who'd like to come in and see what happens. And then a week from Tuesday at 2 o'clock is Phase 3 bid letting. And so those are important dates. They will determine the trajectory of what's going to happen the next two, three years.
So tomorrow's is the high school, and then next Tuesday is elementary.
I think we decided to have it in here, yes.
Yes, yeah. And Travis Kreese, who's a local Harlan graduate, is one of the site supervisors for the high school project. So that's kind of exciting. He's employed by DeNovo. Good, student accolades.
Very good.
She's doing just fine.
Sorry.
We'll move on to the action items. And we're looking at number one, personnel report.
Oh, wait. We got new student accolades real quick. I got the student accolades.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. It was your fault.
Hey, I don't care.
I only have a couple pictures. They tell me it's because my phone is ancient.
Jeff was a dinosaur and we couldn't get pictures.
iPhone 8, and they said my phone's full. I don't know. But these are a couple pictures that we did get to go through. This is from the Science Center of Iowa, which I'm going to talk about in field trips. So I'll just bring that up right now. So this is field trip season for, at the elementary. And we make a season of it, I'll tell you what. So we go to the zoo, these are the highlights. We go to the zoo, we go to the Science Center of Iowa, which this is. And the kids absolutely love it. The hard part is it's in Des Moines, but it's that good of a trip that it's worth going to. And then our fifth graders go to the state Capitol where they get to, they weren't in session, but we still get to go in and see the Supreme Court. I think Susie Christensen was there and helped them out. And it's a, it's a pretty eye-opening experience for the fifth grader. So we've only been doing that one a few years, because it's, again, it's one of those where, you know, when you travel for three, three and a half hours, you're limited on how much time you can be there. And then you have to, you know, so we eat on the bus and do as much as we can while we're there. So that's a big one. And then we take a lot of local, we go to the museums and stuff as well, like in Omaha. We go to the Rose Theater, we go to, you know, all the big touristy places, if you will. But then we also do a lot of local, some factories here in town. I think somebody goes to the dairy, hospital, Prairie Rose, Nishna Bend. There's all kinds of, so typically they get one big field trip in the spring and then one or two local, but we try to get the local ones as much as they want just because it's our own local people. So that's just an example of the kids at the Science Center. Another thing that I wanted to share for student accolades is Tara Landsman is our talented gifted teacher, and she just got finished with the Invention Convention. We were kind of on an invention convention hiatus, so she got it rocking and rolling again. Blakely Fatka was first place in fifth grade and she made a smart pillow. So I need that. Jefferson Patty must take after his mother because he won the fourth grade and he was making adjustments to an automatic watering system. And then Cameron Shivi, she got the STEM Award because, this one's really impressive. Not that they all were impressive, but she made a computer program that would help glow-in-the-dark ear, or hearing aids so that grandparents could find them. It's customizable because her grandparents lose their hearing aids. Yeah, so that's what that one was. And then another one that I want to talk about is we had our, we had a job fair, which we had never had before. So we had a job fair over at the elementary school. And I know I'm going to miss some people on here. But we had businesses that came, were Liam Marie's Photography, RAC, Shelby County Emergency Management, Sheriff's Office, Iowa State Patrol, Iowa Department of Natural Resources. I know Arnhem Holt's Construction was there, and they also donated hot dogs. So thanks Barney for that. Gosh, I hope I'm not missing somebody. I think the fire department was there. So just a lot of career, and it was hands-on, you know, they all let them put straps on. And, you know, they got to play with, you know, emergency management had the drone. If you've never had a chance to look at that, you need to make a trip to go see how they can run that thing, that drone way up in the air. And we could see our heat sense, you know, it is, you know, to find missing people. So they had it way up there. You couldn't even see it, but it was showing a picture of us right down under it. So it was pretty amazing. Some of the things you didn't even realize are right here in town. So anyway, lots of things going on at the elementary school, lots of accolades to be had. But that's in a nutshell.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, Bill.
We had fifth grade orientation day here about a week ago, where we invited the fifth grade students over, and they got to see where their classrooms will be next year in the middle school, and where some other things are located in terms of the lunchroom, library, band room, things of that nature. And then get to meet their teachers that they're going to have. And then I take them into the gym, and we have a little question and answer time with them. So that top picture is some of the kids that came over. The next one is we have an outdoor classroom out at Prairie Rose, where our sixth grade goes to that, where it's an all-day outdoor classroom, where they rotate around to about seven or eight different stations. And so it was nice that we landed on a good day. Mother Nature cooperated with that, so they had a good time. And then the last picture there is our large group band contest over in Dennison, where our sixth grade band performed, and seventh and eighth grade band performed, and they got very good ratings over there, one plus. So they did a good job.
That's great. Casey? Yeah, let's see, the top left is our senior awards night. And so that's just the group of seniors, right before the ceremony, snapped a picture of them all. A lot of awards, a lot of scholarships awarded. So very thankful for the support our community gives to our seniors as they are heading into their next chapter in their lives. So thank you, everyone, for all your support. The next picture to the right of that is our science club planted, I don't remember how many trees they took. Seven? Seven trees, just in the area of the school there, so just right up front here, yeah. And so that was nice, and had a good day there to do that. And then we had our, the bottom two pictures are theater performance class. On the left there is just a picture I snapped of, that I think it was just comical. But it, just a, they put on a performance of No Substitutes and performed it for the high school a couple weeks ago. A 45-minute present, or 45-minute performance that the theater performance class put on for everybody. And then as soon as they got done, they had to start packing up the stage. And the stage had to be completely cleared off and empty, so that construction could begin. So of course, they had to be dramatic, but this was us loading up trailers. We rented a space in the Shelby County Annex Building. And so we loaded up trailers for a couple days last week, and then unloaded trailers. And they thought that was bad enough. I said, you just wait, because then here about September, October, we get to load this up. We get to do it all over here, bring it back up here. So yeah, just preparing to move. Teachers are packing and purging and clearing and everything. And next week is kind of our, our, our big move week for everything on the second floor. And then everything below it has to be cleared out and moved. So trying to finish school, and as soon as we are done with semester tests, then pack and move, so.
So where's all that stuff going from the teachers' rooms?
Some of it, we have some, we have portals coming in in August. So if it's going to be used again, we're using the wrestling room to store just over the course of the summer. Some, we're going to have a garage sale, some we are putting on gov deals. We just had 30-foot dumpsters delivered today to hopefully purge a lot.
And then we have the trailers.
And then we have storage trailers parked out back as well for, for like the, the rest of it. Whatever we want to keep that we don't need right, you know, access to right away, so. I said keep, make a clean, keep, a toss, and a sell pile. So it's like that TV show where we used to go in and organize everything. We learned it from them, a keep, a toss, and a sell, so.
That's a job.
Yeah, so we will have a, our garage sale. We will hold June 8th and 9th. And we are just going to put everything out on the tables in the commons. And it's the same weekend as the town garage sale, so.
We're purging so much, this building's going to weigh a lot less.
So we'll have quite a bit of stuff else going around too. Hey, you got this.
Yeah, there is lots of, yeah.
We'll give them a heck of a deal.
That's good.
Going once, going twice, yeah. Okay.
Very good. We accomplished the student accolades. Now we'll move to action, right?
I will say, girls soccer, this is the winningest season in franchise history.
Oh, yes.
They played tonight, which is their last regular season game, and tonight is the boys' beginning of their regionals. They'll play Wednesday here at home against Trainer. But, I mean, I played on the team 20-plus years ago. It was just starting then, but this is their winningest season in franchise history, so.
Exciting.
Yes.
Were you on the winningest team?
I was not on the winningest. My daughter's definitely better than I was, but. She's broke some bones for this team, for heaven's sake.
Hurts or someone else's?
Girl. Way to clarify. Way to clarify, thank you.
Joel, that was a great.
That was excellent. No, that's the best question.
Okay, on to action. We'll turn it over.
Yep, it's a lot smaller this, this month, you guys.
That's good.
One resignation, and she's going to the AEA. And then some new hires, but we only have one at this point. One certified opening left, and that is in the elementary school. And that is a teacher that we'd like to add to make sections smaller for the fourth grade. So we are sitting, we're, I'm feeling pretty good. And then, excuse me. The middle school coaching positions, Bill and I have talked, and there are several new teachers who are going to join us that have expressed interest. So we think we have quite a few of those. We've got a, we've got a person in mind, so we're working on those, but they're still on there because they haven't started yet.
I see that. Oh, no, I see the women's wrestling coach. Do we have enough numbers this year that...
Yes, we're going to have.
We're going to have, okay.
And we did, we did offer a freshman football coach position, but we just didn't have enough time. It just happened, so that position has been offered, but it will go on next month. Personnel report.
And the athletic director is still, wow, that's a great accomplishment. What did you think of that, Greg?
There was an article in the paper Friday, so.
Good thing.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion on the personnel report? If not, if we could get a motion to approve the personnel report.
I make a motion to prove it?
Joni and Second, I'll second that. From Mondi, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Next action item is two, the approval of the purchase of a mower.
Brian, do you want to talk to this, or do you want me to?
Just to clarify something, the, the prices on the mowers, actually, we, they're all done through a state consortium. So we still feel like we should go out, you know, three bids irregardless. Because they're done on a state consortium, you're getting consortium price no matter what you buy. Mike and I decided we were going to get three, and you see the three up there. We kind of talked it over, the, the top one is for a Skag type mower. It's used a lot of times by its golf courses, cities and stuff, that that's a lot of what they do. It's, I think it's called a Turf Tiger, if I remember, it's got a Kubota diesel in it. We did get that one. We also got one from John Deere, which is Vanwall and Avoca, and then one from Nelson Farm Supply in Harlan, which, that one's a Yanmar. Mike has had a lot of, I guess he's had a lot of exposure to the Skag. And I, he felt, he thought they're very durable. He was telling me of one, he knows it's 25 years old, that is still running. It's a little bit more expensive than the John Deere. He said they are a little bit easier to service because of the drive mechanisms. So he said he would like to go with the Skag if at all possible, but he would, he would, obviously, if the board chose to go with the John Deere, he'd be okay with that also. The Yanmar was considerably more expensive, even with the discount, the state discount, so it's, we kind of ruled that one out.
Did he mention maintenance?
Pardon me?
Did he mention much about maintenance?
The, the, part of the reason, he works on, our guys work on their own, for the most part, unless it's major. He, the reason he, I guess, was leaning towards a Turf Tiger, which is a Skag, is he says they're a little for, they're a little, he's worked on both. He says they're a little easier to work on. A little easier for them guys to do their own maintenance, and that's part of the reason he liked that.
Do you know what our other mowers are? I mean, is, is it similar to the other, the mowers we already have?
Yeah, we actually specked out 61-foot decks. What we're probably going to do, because our mowing fleet is, let's say, got a little long in the tooth. So we're probably planning on getting one next year. He wants to get a 61-inch this year, and probably a 72 next year. That'll allow us to, and actually, I think what we're going to do, we have two, two mowers for the Toolcats we have. They're pretty cumbersome. They're helpful, like if you're mowing up north here or down on the east field. But when you have to trim around stuff, they're not a lot of use. One of them's got quite a few years on it. So probably what we're planning to do is trade in the older of the two of, of the Toolcats next year, when we, when we go out and get the 72-incher. And that one's a little bit bigger, but it's, if you fashion it, the ones on the Toolcats are more like, if you grew up on a farm, a bush hog, they're, they don't self-level as much as you get when you get a mower. And that's part of the reason they want to go back to the mowers a little bit more.
Only boys want to talk about mowers this long.
What do y'all think about their three-step research? What are you thinking on that?
Well, I think, I would trust Mike's thought process on that, and he's the one that's got it.
He says nothing against the John Deere, he says, but he says, I've worked on them both, and he says, it's just, we, they do a lot of their own work. And he says they're just a little easier to work on.
I would be more than happy to make a motion to approve the purchase of the Skag mower from Haley Equipment and Carroll.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jade. How about a second on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, we'll move on from mower to computers. The approval of Chromebook 2 in bid.
And one bid.
Two and one, so there are two, there are two computers. Tablet and a computer in one.
It's a convertible tablet, so basically you get your touchscreen for the kids, and we can work like an, like an iPad. So they can do apps, but they can also flip them back around and actually back.
I see, two and one.
Yes, upgrades, Jeremy?
This would be for first graders. I know in the lower notes, I said kindergarten somewhere in there, but it's actually first graders. So we went out and got three different bids on these. And me being new to my role, we looked up the Chromebooks, which we talked about a month ago. But the Chromebook 2 and 1s are different in the inventory. So when we're looking up ages, we're looking up the ages on Chromebooks, I was like, oh, we're good, just one set of Chromebooks. But these ones are also expiring this year, so we need to replace those. So we went out to Sterling, Lightbox up there in Erling, and IT Savvy. And Sterling came in a pretty low bid. And we've done a lot of business with Sterling on the Dell Chromebooks, and they've been great with us, so.
Where had we purchased these prior?
Sterling.
So that's two.
Yeah, for the last, for the last five years, we've gone to Sterling. They just, they're a Dell Platinum partner, so Dell-wise, we can get the best pricing from them compared to anybody in the area.
I see, there's 120 of them.
120, so that's four carts, at 30 a cart, so.
Any discussion on that? It's the low bid. Could we have a motion on this?
Absolutely, we can.
A second. Make some motion that we approve the purchase of the two in one Chromebook. Lieutenant Catherine, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Okay, next, we'll move on to the approval of the memorandum of understanding with Rising Hope Academy.
Okay, so this one is, Rising Hope Academy is the therapeutic classroom that we partner with Green Hills AEA. Our piece of this is a student who can attend for free tuition, which turns out to be quite a bit of money when you consider those $210 a day for a student to go to a special school. So that's times the 180 days. Plus, we don't have to transport students back and forth. We have students right now that we transport back and forth to Omaha. So it's a good partnership with them. We have to provide the classroom, and that's it. They provide the teacher, the paraprofessional, and the behavior specialist, and a master level social worker that goes in there. So Jeff has been very helpful in helping us find at least a classroom. So they, they have a nice setup now, because it's right by a door, so they can be dropped off and picked up a little bit earlier than others. And we have students, I, they have students, I think they have five or six students there from several different districts. Riverside, Troy Center, we have one there, Manning. So it's worth, it's worth the partnership right now. We don't have to do a ton. We helped out a little bit, and helps, yeah.
Pleasant having around.
Yeah, so. Saves us some, yeah.
Does this change driving for people?
Not, it, it's already, we've had it this year, so this is just for next year's contract.
And what was the annual to budget last year approximately?
Well, if you look at, I look at it from maybe a little different standpoint. I look at from what if we were taking a student out of the district placement, and we are transporting them. The transportation, roughly speaking, is going to run you $20,000 a year for one student, and that's probably on the low side. If you're actually have that student in a program down there, you, or they can depend on the program that he has.
Eighty days is about 37, 38,000 dollars. So you're saving $58,000, keeping him in.
Probably $40,000.
See how much faster she is.
At a minimum.
Just letting you know.
Yeah.
Very good.
I missed that one.
Well, you start picking on it, you saw iPhone.
Oh, I wasn't picking on him, I was just like, it's a mower.
Any more discussion? How about having a motion here to approve this memorandum of understanding?
So moved.
It's blessing you.
Seconded by Al. Catherine?
Yes, sir.
Oh, stop it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. Next, we'll move into action item E5, which is the approval of the services agreement for managed services.
Oh, you had your footer up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what I did. Just click out of it. I'm trying.
Oh, okay.
It's not, oh, good.
Give you a second.
Just get all the way out.
Turn it off, not on.
Get out.
Casey, to the bathroom.
Oh, she did turn it off, not on. Guess she didn't get the blue screen of death.
There they go. All right, sorry, guys.
No worries. So I'll say this, this is the approval of the services agreement for managed services contract with the Green Hills Area Education Administration for the 2023-2024 school year. What was that? I teed it up for you. What's that? I teed it up for you.
So this contract, so we have three different ones from the AEA. This one has, uh, different services here, so this is more towards technology. So E-Rate is that federal program that gets us, uh, a huge discount when we do our internet and different services, and it's gonna help us with our bond issue, buying some of the pieces for that. Like seventy percent more discount. Dave Frer from there does the paperwork, and it's, it's extensive, it's hard work, yeah. So, and he's an expert at it, so we pay for that. And then, I think, is that it, Brian, on this one?
No, the managed services, he's going to do a little bit more with all of the stuff, with the construction stuff. He's going to manage what we need, um, so we're kinda getting aligned on that.
And again, the budget effectiveness approximately?
The, the managed services, where that's probably gonna save us, this is an additional cost this year, but we feel like we'll be able to better align our old total tech costs with it. I don't know whether we'll continue to do that one or not, but I think we need it this year.
Yeah, we decided to do it this year so that he can help us, and then he also, um, they did an audit for us last year for free. They're gonna do another audit in, within this, just to help us keep up.
It's in the overall tech budget.
I see, okay.
Yes. So this is all technology related.
Questions or thoughts about this? Okay, could we have a, uh, a motion to approve this contract with master, or, excuse me, services agreement for managed services contract?
So moved?
So moved by Joanie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Greg, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, next, we move to action item E six, approval of the master social worker agreement with the Green Hills AEA for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
So master social worker, uh, this is a job share, or, Brian, what am I thinking of? Not job sharing.
This, we've had this one before, it's just to renew.
Cost share.
It's a cost, no, well, it is a cost share, but what am I trying to say? That we get money back?
Shared.
Operational sharing, sorry, can, so this is an operational sharing piece where, um, we get operational sharing dollars back for having a social worker. We are adding, we have her one day, um, a week, and we are adding a second day a week, and then she also is assigned to that Rising Hope Academy, so we kinda get her as a bonus day for nothing.
Is this in lieu of our behavioral health, not renewing that contract as well as itself?
That's part of it, this helps, yeah, so there's three different layers of that, and one layer is for people who have insurance and, and just want to get behavioral, or get therapy here at school, it's school-related, and we have two different, um, companies helping us with that, Sherry Fletcher and Family Connections. And then she would provide for, um, students that don't have insurance or have the option, maybe don't have insurance but don't qualify for Medicaid, so there are that gap in between, so she can provide that. She's a licensed therapist as well, so it's free from her.
Do we track any sort of, uh, the percentage of students high school age that get services through our mental health share programs? I'm curious to know if we have, I see that as a bigger issue in some of the larger district meetings that I attend, that the issue is the need is higher than the offering. Um, I'm sure in middle school probably, I don't know, do people get down for that behavioral health? Do they have opportunity for that?
Yep, and at the elementary, so we kinda have somebody at each one, yep.
I'm curious if you think we're meeting the needs of the students?
I can bring those numbers next time, Jade, if you want.
There's, uh, there's a waiting list, or there's a waiting time, uh, for people right now. A little bit depends on how often they wanna be seen, there's a lot of red tape just to even get started, but, uh, with some of the other entities that we've brought on, we're able to get people that need the assistance or helper or ask them for that, we're able to get them in.
Okay, what do you think in your school?
We're way better than we ever have been. You know, I would say that for sure, I think we're now, we're serving kids better than we have been, but the list is getting longer as well. You know, so that's gonna be a fluid situation.
Yeah.
I think if the answer was that we're meeting all the mental health needs of every student in school, we, they'd want us to write a book, and we'd be the only one that pulled the wrong thread.
Well, I do think it's something that should be on our trajectory, because it's an issue, and not just in this community, but, and maybe we are sheltered a little bit, that I've heard some different things, but it's a discussion at some of these larger communities that intervention on any level is not meeting the needs of the student, and it's not because they don't want to. Some of it's budgeting, some of it's availability, some of it's staff, but I think this is an area that if we want to maintain excellence, you know, um, I'm curious to know what we feel like we're meeting the need versus where's our deficit? You know, are there twenty kids regularly on the waiting list or two? You know, to me, in our sizes, that's pretty okay, but. I will, um, I mean, I can do that in June. I can bring just what the numbers are, and then what our continuum of supports, 'cause there's lots of things that happen ahead of time before therapy might hit. Do you know, like, what are all those supports that we're doing ahead of time? Yeah, so, yeah, I can. 'Cause I mean, I'm happy to work out these programs, but to me, when we take out, like, behavioral health, which I understand, I, I remember why we did all of that, I'm curious to make sure that we're meeting these needs. Oh, it's replaced, yes, absolutely, it's absolutely replaced, if that's, yep, yep.
I think it's good to, uh,
Yes, yes.
It's, it's good too that Jenny has a lot of background in this particular field, don't you, from the past?
Yeah, this is kinda a passion, so I can, but I can bring those numbers, I mean, I think, yeah.
Well, I, some of it's out of curiosity, because there are some bigger districts that, you know, if you hear their school-based interventionist speak, and it's pretty staggering.
It's my understanding that, uh, in the preteen, or, uh, early teen girls, there's been almost a three-fold increase over the last ten years in serious mental health needs. So even if we expand, it's gonna be very challenging to keep up with it.
But it's a need that if we are able to meet it, I think we should give a wholehearted effort, because it's, it rounds a student out, if they're struggling and have no opportunity at home, you know, it's, it's just as vital as lunch, as eating, you know, in my opinion. So, I'm just curious those numbers, not that we're not doing a good job, just curious.
Yes, we can bring those. So this contract is for the MSW, so that would be, like, kind of that catch-all for anyone who doesn't have insurance or can't get.
Any other discussion, or do we have a, a motion to approve the master social worker agreement?
So moved.
So moved by Al.
All second.
Seconded by Jade. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next item is seven, the approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four baseball and softball field contract.
This is something, actually, we've kind of in the past, it's been done here, there, and everywhere by, um, multiple people, and we decided this year we wanted to get it all done together. We did, um, we did end up going with, uh, Jay Cruz, which is Jeff, and we, in the interest, we did actually visit with, um, a couple of other companies in town that would have been capable of doing it, and they chose not to, um, do it just because they're, they're, uh, being too busy. Honestly, i- i- it's a situation, this is gonna be no more expensive or less expensive than it's ever been in the past, and, um, I'm pretty sure it'll probably be done well with Jeff, so, um, we would recommend going ahead and approving it.
Having some outside. Is this the first year it's, this has been writing, so?
I've heard this is the one.
Yes, and no, we've kind of, it's, some of the mowing's been done by one group, some of the fertilizing's been done by one group, so it's kind of been, um, a little less formal in the past.
Something to do in your spare time, right?
Yep. I can't give up baseball, it's the first time in eleven years I haven't had a player, so.
You, I must say, the field looks better already than it has in the past.
It's great.
Yeah.
Well, it makes sense to have one, one business doing the whole thing instead of piecing it out.
It's a lot easier, we don't have to be jacking around.
Got plenty to do besides, right? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the baseball and softball field contract for mowing?
Some of.
Et cetera. Okay, so, it's Monty and Greg, did I catch that, Monty?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next is.
Can I just ask a question? Like, the, the fertilizer chemicals and stuff, do you buy those locally, or do you decide on that, or does Brian?
Well, well, it's kind of an interest, I've been doing this for about the last three year, two or three years volunteering, and so I get most of them either from, uh, um, Paul Brook, that's where I get the fertilizer, and then any chemicals that are needed, I get from Harlan, um, seed and chemical.
Cyclone.
Cyclone, sorry. Hold the bigger van.
I was just, yeah, I just thought we were.
Freaking hard for TV right there. Hold the bigger van.
Supporting our local, I mean, local.
The answer is yes. If we need, if we need things like clay and stuff like that, that stuff has to come.
Well, I'm just glad that we are supporting locally, so I just wanted to make.
I have possibly a dumb question. Does every sports coach, head coach have to find their own announcers? This was a real Facebook heat storm here not too long ago about softball, that they were looking for their own announcer, is that what normally happens? I don't know.
I don't know, I can find that out for you.
No, I'm, I'm just curious, is that a thing?
I did softball for twelve years, and Mitch asked me.
Okay.
Mitch typically not in the past has always tried.
Well, I'll just say, seemingly in softball, that she's had to find her own announcer, and of course, it went downhill real fast on social media, which, I know, shocker there, people get upped up on that.
Yeah, just so you know, I'm not coming out of retirement.
That, I was just curious, is that how that works? That would be great, so many, good, great.
Okay, down the eighth grade football coaches are not finding their own announcers.
There's such a thing as bad announcers too, we'll just say that, right?
Why Brian doesn't do it anymore?
Oh, that's why Brian was fired?
No, I, I resigned.
Okay, the next item we have here is item number eight, the approval of the memorandum of understanding. That's what a move is, with IJAG.
So this is just basically kind of promoting again what, what they shared with us today, and, and having him next year, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar cost to the district, but that is, like he said, about a third of what a teacher would cost for that program, and she's making big strides already.
Yeah, absolutely. Comments on that, or could we have a motion to approve the IJAG?
So moved.
By Joe.
All second.
Seconded by Jade, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Okay, next we have the, action item nine, which is the approval of the twenty twenty-three graduating senior.
Now, they've already graduated, right?
They have, so that's why we did not approve them in April, because we needed to make sure that they,
They graduated.
That they graduated.
So if we have a problem with it now, or their diploma's not signed, or?
No, it's, no problem, they're all signed, yes, that's why. Well, this is just.
Maybe I didn't pay enough attention last night.
Positive this is absolutely necessary, is that?
Yeah, this is just, uh, we don't know that it's necessary, it's tr- it's traditionally done by the board, so we, we're bringing it, but we also don't wanna put someone's name in April, that maybe, I mean, hopefully everybody graduates.
If I wanted to keep my kids around for a year. You don't wanna stake any off.
Did you hand them their diploma?
Let's keep them on that.
You hand, here's your, their diploma?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's exciting.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Yeah, it was very exciting.
How many didn't?
Thank you, thank you.
How many didn't? Do we have some numbers that, do we know how many?
We didn't have any, everybody walked across the stage. Well, there were, there have been a couple, but like, early drops, early during, didn't have anyone who was working to meet graduation requirements, not, not meet them.
Good.
And we would have just held them and had them continue to work until they met those requirements, and then have given them, but they had to have met requirements by Friday at ten AM to be able to walk across the stage, and everyone was able to do that, so. And some of them took it right up to the, right up to ten AM, but they did it, so. And the state recognizes four-year graduates, and then those that might need an extra year, they recognize a fifth-year graduate too, so we still get the credit for the high school graduates if they're there, so. Yep. That's another plug for.
So how many graduated this year?
A hundred and five?
A hundred and five.
Well, I will make the motion to approve this.
Okay, rail a motion on the table.
Well, I'll second it if they're all good to go.
Seconded by Jade, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Next, we have policy review schedule first reading, item number ten.
I thought these were very easy, so I sent Catherine an email that said, just to be clear, if anything, if IASB is gonna change, you'll let us know, because this seems way too easy to read. So she said yes, so evidently these have been fine.
Yep, you'll see IASBs, well, if you kind of scroll down a little bit, Jenny, um, those notes are not to be printed, those are supposed to be for me, but they are currently in our policy, so I'd like to redact those or change those, um, and then.
They weren't when I looked at it.
Really?
No?
And then.
When I printed, that happens.
It does, wow.
I think there are just a few, like, they have an individual education plan, it's, it, it's in there, and it, it should be.
There's a couple more in there, yeah.
Yeah, they're just small little tweaks.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right, Jade, it was pretty easy.
I, wasn't it though?
We like.
It was very mosey this time, I thought.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the first reading, and any other discussion?
So moved.
So moved by Monty, and second. Al's got the second on that, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Item number eleven is the policy review schedule second reading.
Yeah, I, uh, brought up some comments last month, and, uh, after hearing what they had to say about it, it makes sense for all of us.
Yeah, that we sit on Fridays, yeah.
Yeah, I really appreciate it, you're, you're looking at that, noticing.
And the lawyer thought it was a good question too, Jeff, so good job.
From the lawyer.
We're gonna have to put board accolades.
Yes.
Sorry, take your picture.
Maybe we can get. I want a motion to approve the policy review schedule second reading.
So moved.
So moved by Joe, and second.
All second.
We got that by Jade, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, no? We're to, uh, action item twelve, the consent agenda. Ready for this, Brian?
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? I guess Rachel Larson were on this. I didn't notice too much, I always, I see, always see the bills, and I always have to ask you about something. Let's see.
I'll be a little disappointed if you have none in the comment.
I see Kansas City Audio Visual, is that for equipment?
That is, um, some more of those clear touch cords, we're cycling those in.
Gee.
That's a very good question.
No, you can't just hit them out. Glenwood School District, fifteen hundred dollars? Sports or something, maybe, or?
Can you, oh.
Facility rental.
Every year, the soccer teams play down at Creighton, and what ends up happening is Glenwood usually covers the up front, the officials, the whole nine yards, and then there's some facility rental, and so that's our half.
Such a nice facility.
Oh, my gosh.
The kids are always happy to play there.
I can think of that, I'm sorry.
Making you think, that's good. IT Savvy, twenty-six thousand seven fifteen.
That's, uh, some of our replacement, I believe that's staff. Help me out, Steve, that's a staff replacement. Staff replacement computers. And that actually, I think, was approved last month, I believe.
Very good, and all the budget stuff, your, your funds and everything?
Yeah, we've been monitoring the individual, um, discretion areas, but I think everybody's gonna be okay.
Any other thoughts on the consent agenda? If not, could we have a? If not, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Greg. Seconded now. Got seconded by Monty, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hear from you, Joe? Gotcha, okay. The last item is to adjourn, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I get that again, yes.
Jade gets this one. Seconded by Joni, all those in favor for adjourning? Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no? Is it going to go home?